I'd like to call the June 4th meeting of Gloucester County Board of Supervisors to order. Ms. Steele, will you call the roll?
Mr. Gibson?
Here.
Dr. Orth? Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Crisco?
Here.
Mr. Bizani and Mr. Nikosia are absent. You have a quorum.
All right, would you all please stand and join me in a moment of silence for the 80th anniversary of D-Day, followed by an invocation by Reverend Kevin Smith.
Let us pray. Most wise and eternal God, our Father, let us once again that we call upon your most holy and everlasting name, God, just to say thank you, Lord. Thank you for tonight, dear God, and we pray, dear God, asking your blessings upon this meeting, Lord. And we pray, dear God, that every word that is spoken and everything that's said tonight, dear God, that you will be able to get the glory, the honor, and the praise, God. God, we ask you to be in our midst, and, Lord, we ask you, dear God, to please bless this county, God. God, we ask you, dear God, to bless our first responders, dear God. Bless our schools, dear God, and, Lord, keep all of our citizens safe, dear God. And, Lord, we pray, Lord, that you continue to just let your light shine upon us, God. Keep us, Lord, under the shadows of your wings. Lord, we thank you once again for this night. Thank you for those that are present. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Now, we all join me, and Emmalyn Hemphill, leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
I didn't say this earlier, but Emmalyn is an eighth grader at Peaslee Elementary School, and she's the student council president. Thanks. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from February 20th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item is the adoption of the agenda. There's a couple of changes that we're going to make. One, we're going to move 11A to 11B, which is board appointments. We're going to make 11A ARPA funding discussion, and we may have, in addition to the General Assembly update, we'll see in a few minutes, but we'll leave that as it is right now.
Motion to approve as amended.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item is matters presented by the board. Don't all speak at once. Anything?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just want to recognize the Gloucester High School softball team and the Gloucester High School baseball team for winning the region championship. It's an amazing achievement. The softball team is playing right now. We hope they emerge victorious, and baseball is playing at seven, so we wish them the best of the luck in their games tonight.
All right, very good, Mr. Gibson. Next item will be county administrator items. Ms. Steele?
Okay, thank you. Just to start off with a few dates reminders, we will, the board will be meeting with the Planning Commission for a joint meeting this Thursday night. On July 11th, there'll be a public hearing on the zoning ordinance changes, and also, we are into our season change with the board where we're only meeting once a month, but the, because of the July 4th holiday, our meeting for the month of July will be on Tuesday, July 16th. Next item is, I've had some questions raised, and Deputy County Administrator George, was Mr. Baines, checked in with FEDOT, and people are questioning, when is the grass cutting going to start on Route 17? Because it's looking pretty ragged. And so, it should be any day. They don't start until June, and so it is June, and we're looking forward to having that trimming done. And then finally, I would like to congratulate the other Deputy County Administrator, Steve Wright, who was the recipient of the Julian F. Hearst Distinguished Service Award by the Hampton Roads Association of Public Administrators. And we are very pleased that we had him recognized, and it's extra special because it was two years in a row. Because Mr. Baines was recognized the year before. So that's, we congratulate him on his accomplishments and thank him for all that he does for us. And that's it. Mr. Chair?
Mr. Crisco?
I know I've seen it somewhere, Ms. Steele, but you said July 11th?
Yes.
Is the public hearing?
Yes.
Where is that located?
That's here, I believe.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is a General Assembly update. We'll have the Honorable M. Keith Hodges, Delegate 68 District, Virginia House of Delegates.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Still can't get used to that 68. It's still the 98, but, you know, of course, with redistricting, everything changed. But thank you for having me here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I always like to start out first by saying thanks to each and every one of you for what you do each day. Local government is a much more difficult job than I could ever imagine, and I can't thank you enough for what you do each and every day. But really here to provide you, you know, with an update with the general, from the General Assembly in the House. Of course, we returned Richmond after, you know, the regular session on May 13th to pass a compromise budget that, and also deal with our judges. So we had finally come to an agreement with the governor, and after we had failed to reach an agreement during regular session, we had a little bit better-than-expected revenue forecast, so we were able to retain our spending levels of the conference report passed through the General Assembly without any tax increases. So that, to me, that's very important and something that's near and dear to my heart. Did not include any additional authority for localities imposed, an additional 1% statewide for their schools. I know there's a push for that. Gloucester was in on that, and, you know, after the tour of the schools, that's been a tremendous benefit to Gloucester by getting that legislation with Senator Norman and I were able to get through, and that's been a, just wonderful for Gloucester schools to be able to make that happen. We had an additional $525 million in revenue allowed, that the conference allowed to remove, an increase on online services, and then also captures $116 million in adjustments due to the vetoed bills by the governor. So of course, we go through the bill, the governor vetoes those. We had $116 million in savings there. It also includes the minimum wage, of course, which was part of that. That didn't make it. And then the Biden bill also, which we called the caboose bill, it passed the House 94 to 6 and the Senate 39 to 1. So overall, it was a good compromise. You know, like any bill in a budget, you know, it's that thick. We bought about $130, $40 billion. You don't agree with everything in there, but at the end of the day, we've got to get it worked on. So the governor immediately signed both bills, and the changes to the caboose bill, which is, of course, last year's bill, you know, moving forward, became effective immediately, and then the new legislation comes, becomes effective July 1st. Also, left out of the language in the budget, of course, tied us to regear or the regional greenhouse gas emissions, which they had tied us to, that's stripped from the bill as well. So the governor asked for that, and we were finally able to have a compromise to remove us from that. A little bit on the, I'll give you an overview of the budget, then I'm going to talk more about things that we're working on here on the General Assembly. I'll talk a little bit about it. But as far as the budget, we have a 3% wage hike each year for state and local employees and teachers. The local employee pay raises become effective July 1st of each year. It also includes $2.5 billion for K-12 education and an additional $527.8 million to support early childhood education. With regard to transportation, we have $4 million in, in the waterway maintenance fund, which is very important to this region. $7.5 million for municipal dredging projects here, Middle Peninsula, Northern Act, and Eastern Shore, which I'll get into in a little bit. It has language that's used for the design, purchase, lease, and land for dredge spoils as well in the budget. I'm going to talk about that a little bit. We have $500,000 each year for our Chief Resiliency Officer, which is very important for this region, and we have $201 million deposited in for the BMPs, the Best Management Practices. We have technical support for our soil and water conservation districts. I think that's about $49 million or so. $35.3 million in our community flood preparedness fund, $25 million for dams operated by DCR and the Soil and Water Conservation Districts. And we talked about dams a little bit earlier, and then the girl scout's going to be here and talking about dams, and that's, that's a major, that's a big issue that we need to really address in Virginia. We've done some studies on that, but we really can't get our arms around it because we have hundreds of these across the state. And getting our arms around that and the funding and to address it is, it's a tough decision on taking ownership and who has control of it and, and trying to fund it in the long run. Of course, you know, I can get into a lot more in the budget, but, you know, every, every section, every session is different, totally different. And I always say, you know what, you can't make this stuff up. You literally can't make it up, because you never know what to expect. You never know what's going to happen, but you always try to say two or three steps ahead, but you still can't make it up. But overall, you know, I was fairly successful in getting things done, but one thing that did concern me was, we had, what, just in one day, we had 71 bills go through the Rules Committee. Seventy-one bills, two minutes of testimony, and every one of those bills died. Many of those bills dealt with boards, commissions, public input to, to solve problems in Virginia. So I had a bill, and I can talk about that a little bit, dealing with healthcare and arrest and so forth, two minutes of input, gone. What that's telling me is, you know what, we have people that need to provide the input, we have experts that can come forward and provide that input and come together and solve the problem, but guess what? It doesn't matter, because we can make the decision for you. Seventy-one bills died in that one committee within a couple of hours, and that concerns me. That's not the way it should work, and, and things have changed quite a bit since it came in in 2012, and I'd only see that, because you all know me, I like to solve problems. And when you have 71 bills go down within a couple of hours with no input at all, I mean, we lost the Flood Commission, gone. Didn't want to see it anymore. And we had work groups that are working on big problems in Virginia, gone. And that, that, that's very concerning to me. Of course, blue catfish, I'll talk about that a little bit. So Gloucester actually, with Sea Farms, was the recipient of $250,000 grant. Many people said, Hodges, you're crazy for bringing up blue catfish. But I see it as the number-one threat to our bay. I have pictures on my phone, fish this long, with 20 crabs in them, anywhere from, you know, an inch to five or six inches. I've seen them with ducks and muskrats in them, to clams, and you name it. They're voracious. They eat anything. And we start to get upriver, they, 75, they're 75% of the fish biomass. But we don't have the processors, we don't have the flash freeze facilities and so forth here to be able to, you know, to, to process them. And of course, you know, if you're going down Suffolk or Chesapeake where Gomorrah sets in, you can't process it. So how do you take care of that? So we were able to, of course, finally get the blue cat, Governor's Opportunity, Governor's Catfish Opportunity Fund for, we had initially $4 million in it. We had $250,000, and we were fortunate, and I had a little bit of input and language, so it showed preference for this area. So Sea Farms was the recipient of that grant to expand their flash freeze, which is tremendous in creating jobs here and helps solve the problem. So we're very fortunate to, to have that moving forward. We have more money in the budget, I believe $750,000 over the next three years to be able to make that happen. Hey, Ryan? And so, we're happy to get that moving forward, so we have a little bit more money. As far as dredging, you know, we have the $7.5 million for dredging, which is very important for this region. And as you know, and I think Gloucester actually was the, was the one that we, we studied and looked at for every one foot change in depth. I think it's a 14, 14% change in property value, I believe. Is that right, Ashley?
Yes.
About 14%. So we were able to get the dollars there, and we're able to have that language in there that will allow for the use for upland spoils and so forth as well. And that's, that's a big deal for this area. So if we can get these sites up, running, ready to go, and have them site-ready, we can start to move this forward, and it also allows for a municipal dredge program as well in the Middle Peninsula. So that language is still in there. Of course, living shorelines has always been very important. That's doing very well. We're, we're looking now, because of the legislation I tweaked, so last year, two years ago, we have 38 companies that want to do business in Virginia, 18 of those here in the Middle Peninsula, to have an industrial park just around resiliency and creating jobs. So we have that moving forward as well, and having a coastal resiliency center. We have also, at Security Legislation, with a totally new type of septic system that hasn't been approved in Virginia. It's the T3 septic, different type of treatment, which will help us moving forward. We also have the above-ground system that we've been working on, that you're familiar with. So we're able to get that through. One thing that concerns me, though, is, you know, our universities and collaborative, especially down here, with William &amp; Mary's and VIMS, they had done away with the Virginia Coastal Policy Center. And we were able to hopefully get that moving forward again in a different way, and get them to work and collaborate with us. So the Coastal Policy Center was, was housed at William &amp; Mary, and they, it provides legal expertise, not only to localities, but to government, state government, military, localities, and it was very, very, very useful. And so we, we pushed those buttons to be able to at least get something going and moving forward in a different way, and to be able to collaborate through the universities to help solve the problems. Of course, healthcare is a tremendous, a big issue for me. Healthcare is our number-one employer here in the Middle Peninsula and the private sector. Number-one employer. So I think number one is healthcare. Walmart's number two. Paperville and West Point's number three. And after that, I think we've got Canon and Fulcrum and, and, you know, Food Lion and Hardee's and so forth. So healthcare is very important. We need to really invest in healthcare and healthcare workforce. So I'm on the healthcare workforce, Healthcare Workforce Development Authority, I created a position in the governor's office that, that actually has a, works as Secretary of Labor, Secretary of Health, Secretary of Commerce, and Secretary of Education, because you need all four of those to be able to move this forward. Secretary of Education, because you need your K-12 workforce to be, you know, to go to your colleges, universities, and, you know, your, your community colleges and so forth. Secretary of Labor, because it's a labor issue. Think of Secretary of Health, and they understand it, but they're over, you know, the VDH and Medicaid and so forth. They get it. They understand it, but it doesn't belong there. But you also need Medicaid reform, insurance reform, and so forth to be able to make it happen. So what this does is it brings all of them together to be able to understand the challenges and overcome those challenges to be able to make it work. We, we've invested quite a bit in healthcare workforce in our AHECs in, in the region to be able to, to move that forward, but that's very important. You know, our kids are moving away. Healthcare is, is an opportunity for them to stay, and if we can open that up, it's a tremendous opportunity. We actually have, was able to get the sonography program and budget funding for that, which is up and running at RCC, where there was a tremendous need and across the district. So those kids are staying here with sonography. So we need to prop up more programs like that. I can talk a little bit more as far as healthcare. You probably don't want to hear that. But I'm working on some ways, but to help localities to bring your healthcare costs down, which is a tremendous challenge, because anything we pass in Virginia right now dealing with arrest laws is very complicated. But also, of course, we had things like the Tic-Tac Bills and so forth as well. I carried one of those, which is a challenge to our students. It's a challenge to our kids when they're doing this all day, and they end up in a rabbit hole, and, you know, where they should be, here in our communities and having fun. But with that, Mr. Chairman, I can answer any questions, and I'm at your disposal.
Thank you, Delegate Hodges. Any questions? Go ahead, Dr. Orth.
Yeah, thanks, Delegate Hodges. Appreciate all the work you're doing. So we got an interesting email from a constituent regarding the veteran bills.
Sure.
And I was watching TV just before I got here. Apparently, the governor is calling a special session to deal with this particular issue. Can you elaborate on that particular problem for the veteran benefits?
Can't yet, because we're still not sure that this special session will be called. But I know the governor is focused on this, on this issue, and we'll try to come together and resolve the issue, because we're technically still in session. So we can come together, and the governor can still bring us together to solve this, and I feel certain that we'll at least try to find a way to, to make that happen. I'll know more tonight. About 8:00, I'll know more. Hopefully. So stick around. I wish I could. I've got to leave here and drive. I've already was in Hot Springs, drove here to talk to y'all, and now I've got to drive to Lawrenceville. Long day, but that's fun. I love being with y'all. But yeah, we're, we're going to be focused on that. It's, and it's a hot issue. So hopefully, we can, we can come together and make something work. And the Senator walked in, maybe he has a little bit more, a little bit more.
So would you like to introduce him?
I'll, you want me to introduce him?
I was getting ready to, but go ahead.
Good, my good friend, Senator McDougal. Thank you for being here, my friend.
Welcome. Senate Minority Leader. I mean, give him his credit.
I mean, he's, I mean, he's, he's the big guy. I mean.
I know.
I'm a, I'm a peon. I think you took all the parking just so he was late.
Governor was across the river in Yorktown, so I just left him and ran over to be with, be with y'all. So as soon as he started talking, I left, so, because y'all are much more important, without a doubt. So thank you for having us. I think it's really important to have conversations. And as y'all know, I'm the newbie to representing Gloucester, so I have a lot to learn, and y'all have a lot to teach me over time. But I really appreciate the invite. As Delegate Hodges was saying, we, session was pretty arduous this year. We looked at a lot of different things. There were a lot of things that we agreed on. There were a lot, about 780 of them. There were a lot of things we did not agree on, and the governor had about 200-plus vetoes this year, which is not only the most for any legislative session, they are the most vetoes for any governor in their entire term, and that all happened this session. The one thing that we had a little challenge coming to an agreement on was the budget. So we continued to focus on ways to work together to come up with it, because it had to be a bipartisan solution. The House is controlled by Democrats by one member. Senate is the same, and then the governor's a different party. But we sat down in a room. It was a little contentious at times, but everybody was able to express their views and express their concerns, and we came up with a solution. So at the end of the day, we had a budget that did not have tax increases, that did not include the regional greenhouse gas, which is, in essence, a tax increase on your electric bill. So those things were not in there, saving taxpayers a significant amount of money. And yes, you can cheer for that. So that's a good thing to cheer for. And then we were able to do a lot of positive things. We were able to fund constitutional officers, particularly in rural jurisdictions. That's much more important because of the financial impact and the loss that you have to other jurisdictions that maybe have higher business input already, so they're able to supplement their localities more. For Gloucester in particular, that the funding for K-12 education ended up being about $10.5 million more. So that's a substantial increase, including 3% for teacher salaries, to help keep up with the demand and making sure we have teachers in schools. My daughter is, is sixth grader, just finished sixth grader, moving to seventh grade. So making sure we have good teachers is something that I've been very focused on. And then as Keith touched on, we also put $7.5 million into dredging so that we can start that as a pilot program. That's something we've been looking to do. It's been a challenge getting there, and I think that that will help long-term. And I don't, I missed a little bit of what you said, Keith, but we also were able to fund some of the capital projects, starting at VIMS, which I think will be an economic boost to them, and that'll be very, very important. A question that was asked was about the veterans program. The way that program started, a little history, there was a program that was started a number of years ago to pay for college education for dependents of individuals who were killed in action, referred to as Gold Star individuals, individuals that were disabled 100% due to their injuries in active-duty service. I think it was two years ago, or it might have been three sessions ago now, there was legislation to expand that program past those two areas. The estimates at that time were the expansion of the program to individuals who are disabled because of military service, but their disability did not come through active-duty service or were their dependents, the loss of, of a life, serving us and serving our country. The estimates of that program expansion at that time were about $6 million, and now the estimates are around $180 million for that expansion, so it's substantially greater. Now, with that, there's a lot of debate of whether that 180 is actually the number or whether it's something in there, and we're having a hard time getting some real numbers. But the first budget that went through the legislature that I didn't vote and the governor for, and the governor ultimately did not support, would have stopped that program and didn't make a differentiation between the program as it began and the add-ons, but would have stopped the grandfather, did not grandfather people in, and pretty much changed it dramatically. That was initiative that were, that came out candidly, did not come from key side out, but came out of the, the House. We were able to push back in the final package and tried to grandfather in individuals that had been receiving the program already, because they had made some determinations about what to do, and build in some temporary protections while we continued to expand it. One of the things we found is that estimates, and I don't have solid numbers on this, but that 20% of the people taking use of the program are not Virginians, because the, the way it was written is you don't have to live, be a Virginia resident in order in order to take advantage of the program. So there were some things that were not done perfectly as the program was originally drafted. But I think in the haste to get it done, the words were probably not perfectly done, and there's a lot of work to that continues to be done. On calling into special session, I think that there is a commitment, Republicans, Democrats, and the governor, in order to try to address the way the program is now and make sure we fix a number of the issues. Where there's not universal agreement is, what's the form of addressing that that difference? Do we come back into special session and do it? Do we administratively say we're not going to, we're going to do the program the way it has been done, and come back into special session after a task force meets to come up with suggestions? And there's the strong desire to to hear from the task force that the governor set up, which includes some legislators, legislators, but a lot of real people, to talk about solutions and the direction that we should go for the future. So that's where there's not universal agreement, and I can't tell you what will be the result. But the way we would go back into special session now is at the call of the Speaker of the House and the Chairman of Senate Rules, because we are in special session. To go back to meet, each of them has to call us back in. So that's what we're waiting to see is some of those discussions. And I know people are working pretty diligently. But there does seem to be universal agreement. Those dependents that were killed, family members that were killed in action and received their disability while they were in action, we need to fix the program the way it was when it was originally created. How we deal with the rest of the program, I think we need to have additional discussions and input from people and get real numbers to make sure we're making the right decisions and not just estimates. And that that's the process that'll go on going forward. If that if that answers the question.
Another question. Do you hear from other localities regarding the fact that disabled veterans get relief from taxes and what effect it has on counties in developing their own budget and having to redo budgets, given that we're honoring these people by giving them relief in their real estate and personal property tax? I think for this county, it's become over $1 million in income. And, you know, we're concerned, while it's a valuable program and it honors those people who have serviced the country, you know, we as a county governing board have to deal with how do we balance our budget now that we are removing a significant amount of income?
I have heard from other jurisdictions, some some concerns about how they balance it out, because it's not like that doesn't get spread to every other member of the community. So it is a balance. We've made some decisions on the state level as far as taxing military retiree income, and that is because we wanted to make sure that members, when they retire from their service, feel comfortable being in Virginia and having that lower tax or not taxing up to a certain point. It's something that we think not only attracts those individuals to stay in Virginia, but is also a recognition of their service. And so the other two programs that I think the largest of the two are the college education and the personal and real property tax. The personal real property tax impacts localities more so than it does the state. But we have started to hear in this last budget cycle from some other jurisdictions that it is a significant financial impact. And the same thing for the for the program for college tuition, it's not like there it still doesn't cost money to run all the other programs. It's just how do you spread those addition, those same costs that you have with reduced revenue over everybody else? And are you impacting the family members of law enforcement and teachers and and people that are making wages that are on the lower end of the spectrum? So there's always balance of how we try to come up with it. And that's what I think we have to do with the one program now, is make sure we have the right balance of honoring the sacrifices and make sure that we're protecting the affordability of those institutions for others. And that's some of the challenge that y'all have as well on the local level.
On the lighter side, has Delegate Hodges convinced you about the importance of blue catfish?
Well, we did. We did fund that program. And so in the district I had before this, I represented Middlesex and Essex. And Essex, it's a tremendous issue. The farther you go up the river, there as you get a little less brackish, it's even a bigger bigger challenge. So I've been hearing about blue catfish for a very long time. It's not my favorite thing to eat, but I'm glad a lot of people do. So
I had catfish for dinner tonight.
Was it blue?
I'm wearing my produce. It was blue.
I'm going to add to your tax base and stop by Chick-fil-A on my way out. So the does anybody else have any questions? Well, we we really appreciate what y'all do. As we go through, I feel we're fairly lucky to be able to legislate and look at big policy issues. And they're they're challenging. But what y'all do in the direct dealing with how those policies directly impact people and definitely directly impact community members is really important. And you have a difficult, challenging job, and we really appreciate what you do. Thank you for what y'all do. Appreciate it.
Thank you both for coming.
Thank you. And I'm going to keep I'm going to keep Keith's call to an hour tonight, because we're all on the same call with the governor later this evening. Thank y'all. I have to start the call, so I'm going to make sure we're on time. So we thank y'all.
Thank you.
Oh, before I leave, this is my assistant, Nathan Pittman. So if you ever need us, he's one of the key team members that we have. And please don't hesitate to reach out. Thank you.
All right. Now, for the next item, I hear it might be the last by Ms. Hodges. But I'd like to welcome Ms. Hodges with the Middle Peninsula Northern Neck Community Service Board.
Chairman Hudson, Mr. Crisco, Dr. Orth, and who have I missed here? Mr. Gibson? And of course, Ms. Steele. Thank you very much. Mr. That's a bad one. I'm sorry. He's from Matthews County recently. That's really bad. Thank you. And I believe you're co-chair as well. I mean, vice chair. So that is even worse. So maybe I should do a restart, start over. I'll start with you, Mr. Vice Chair. First of all, thank you for having me here this evening. I greatly appreciate it. About 10 days ago, this organization, we celebrated 50 years of services to this community. It was a delightful event and a great opportunity to engage with our community partners, to include Carol Steele and to include your deputy county administrator. Is she still here? Yes, yes. Thank you very much for for being here. And actually, we had a great time. And Steve Wright was one of our speakers, actually, at at this event. So I want to go back 50 years to the 1970s, when Mr. Biden and I were around, and when the C S B was formed, which we are one of the last C S Bs to be formed in this in the Commonwealth. There are now 40 across the state. In the early 1970s, there were 1,700 people living at what that time was called the Petersburg State Colony. The term colony was later changed to training center. And this was where individuals who were born with a developmental disability, at that time referred to as mental retardation, were placed often as a child and lived there for the remainder of their life. During that era, parents of a child with severe developmental disabilities were often even encouraged by physicians, by family and or friends, to send their child who had significant intellectual challenges to be admitted to the training center. The rationale was that parents should not be take should not have to be tasked with raising a child. The schools were not prepared to educate them, and they weren't prepared to deal with the challenges that come along with a child with developmental disabilities. By the end of the 70s, that decade, there were about seven training centers in the Commonwealth. Today, 50 years later, there is one training center in Chesapeake, and it serves 75 individuals. Where are they now? They're in their communities. They're with parents. They're in residential settings or supportive settings, depending on what their needs are. And they have activities and programs and hope in their lives like all of us. And they're thriving. We have about five of these residential homes, supervised residential homes in our 10 counties. 50 years ago, if you were diagnosed with the most severe mental disorder, that being schizophrenia, a disorder that surfaces mostly in the late teens or the early 20s, you would have been told that your life was over as you knew it. Just when you were getting started in life, you were told to give up your hopes, your dreams of an education, a family, or even children. You were told you can't manage stress. Don't put stress in your life. And it was absolutely critical that you listen to your psychiatrist and adhere to your medication regimen. And at that time, what we now refer to as first generations of antipsychotics, these would cause, over time, side effects such as tremors, most notably in their hands, tick-like movements of their mouth, dry mouth, or even have a gait that was more like a shuffle. More often than not, these individuals were written out of a meaningful, any meaningful life experience. So when I began at the C S B in the 1980s, I met a man, as I was doing discharge planning from the state hospitals, who was in his 60s. I learned that he was admitted when he was around eight years old. He died at Eastern State Hospital. He never left. Today, though, 50 years later, individuals who have who are diagnosed with schizophrenia can recover. They have so many opportunities to live a full life. And as one person said, who is in recovery, a life with a job, a car, and a date on Friday night, like all of us want. I recently heard on NPR that a woman diagnosed with schizophrenia was eventually able, and this is not atypical, was eventually able to return to school, and she eventually obtained a degree in molecular biology. Today, because of the array of services that we have in our community, we are able to offer the supports that individuals need and the hope that they long for. Our psychosocial program, Charterhouse, housed in Tappahannock, I would say is one of the most progressive, if not the most progressive program in the Commonwealth, providing services to individual with diagnosis such as schizophrenia. Looking back, this is nothing short of monumental, how far we've come. And I'm here today, in part, to extend my thanks to you, the Board of Supervisors, for partnering with us these past 50 years. Now, in this 1970s, for those who were around, we were called Middle Peninsula Northern Neck Mental Health and Mental Retardation Services. Later, it was changed to Middle Peninsula Northern Neck Community Services Board. And now, again, with your support, we are officially changing our name to Middle Peninsula Northern Neck Behavioral Health. And I thank you for your support of our name change. Now, I also want to let you know that we were notified about two weeks ago by the magazine Best of Virginia that our agency was selected as number one counseling agency in the eastern region of Virginia. This is for us, it's fantastic news. And this is the eastern, I think it was broken into five regions. The last two years, we were number three, but we moved into number number one. So I want to switch gears and talk a little bit about our financial status. During the pandemic, like many organizations and businesses, in 2020, we had to sadly lay off numerous staff members. During that era, our staff was one of the lowest, if not the lowest, paid C S B staff across the Commonwealth. We could not attract people to come work for us. Or if they did, they only stayed as long as it was to find another and job and leave. And we all know that that in itself is very costly. So at that time, most of the staff had maybe, maybe received one salary increase over the 10 previous years. Since then, we have greatly improved our financial status. We reduced the need for brick and mortars. We do work in a hybrid setting, some in the office and some at home, three days in the office and two at home. We tightened our belts. We became more efficient in our processes. And of our over 30 budgets, more than 90% continue to be in the black each year. Now, there are such programs, such as psychiatric services, where there's a very expensive cost, where we know that the the costs outweigh the revenue. That's one that we know will never probably be in the black. We also have another program, early intervention services, which was often known as R I S P. This is serves in children who are diagnosed with a disability at birth or later on, or have a developmental delay. And we provide services at a with extraordinarily skilled professionals, speech therapists, physical therapists, occupational therapists. So it's a very costly program. And but that program is is not funded sufficiently to be able to even have a zero budget at the end of the year. It's in the red every year. And in part, it's because of the child count that takes place in December of each year. We are moving, we are progressing in that. But also, that program is not part of what we call the performance contract that I come back to you every two years, and what says 90% of the state funding should be matched by 10% of the locality. This is outside of that. So there's no local funding as part of that program. But we're committed to it because it's such a need and makes a difference in so many, the lives of so many children. There are untold people that when they find out you work for this agency, oh, my child receives services when they were, because they might have a speech problem, or they might have just a, you know, developmental delay. Untold people receive the service and benefit from them and help those children be ready for school when kindergarten comes. So speaking about finances again, last year, we finally finished a class and comp study that we partnered with other community services boards. And we, this past year, we completed implementation of the study, with staff finally being placed on the appropriate grade and step that that their job responsibilities warranted. And so that also gave a boost in salaries and in great part to the General Assembly, who awarded the local community services board's monies, were able to give another increase this year before the end of the year, primarily for staff who have been there for over 20 years, who had not received an increase for many, many, who are close to retirement. And as we know, you want your three highest years to be right before you retire, who lost out for years and years and years, not receiving income in the moment, but also not contributing to their retirement. So they're going to be awarded some increase this year as well. So two more things. I also, I want to take this opportunity to highlight our most recent partnership with your county, utilizing the opioid abatement funds. And as you know, your Gloucester team, spearheaded by Steve Wright, has developed some great partnerships and to address a continuing opioid epidemic. It resulted, as I think you also know, in a substance use counselor being placed at the high school. And this has, by all accounts, her present has has been so successful in assisting adolescents who experience a substance use problem, or are being disciplined for a substance use problem, or have a family member that has a substance use problem. And even, and this is unheard of in the substance use world, they request, they self-referred, they self-referred. People who have a substance use problem, generally, they have to hit a pretty low bottom, or have a legal issue, or something threatening in their lives for them to seek services. But children are self-referring to this counselor. So I want to thank you for approving this and for Mr. Wright in helping to craft this. Our peer program also is providing post overdose response services in Gloucester. So that gives hope to family members who have addicted loved ones. So after they might overdose, they respond to the So after they might overdose, they respond to the family, give them information, so they know that when the time comes, they know where to reach out to, to hopefully take a different path, or to be offered different services. So that, and you will never find a more grateful group of individuals than people who are in recovery. So finally, and to your point, Mr. Hudson, when you, when you introduced me, I'm here to, as you know, I'm retiring at the end of this month, and I've been extraordinarily fortunate to have served in this position for the last several years, and hopefully to make a difference in the lives of so many of our family members and our neighbors. And I appreciate your support. I'm here to introduce Melissa Devault, who will be the next executive director this month. We're, we're working together and she will be taking the, over the helms July first. So Melissa, so, any questions from you, to Melissa or myself?
Mr. Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Hodges, I just want to congratulate you on your many years of experience, or service to our community, and the community services board is just a real treasure in helping so many people throughout this area. So thank you and welcome to your new position. We look forward to working with you.
Thank you, and I owe you, Mr. Smith, I apologize. Thank you all very much.
Ms. Hodges, thank you for all you've done and welcome aboard, Mr. Bolt.
Oh, thank you, thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is third quarter financial report, period ending March thirty-first, two thousand four, Ms. Callaway.
Give it a second to get the, oh, there we go. Thank you. All right. So this evening, I'll be presenting the third quarter financial update for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four. For this quarter, I tried really hard to make sure that the presentation was not just big lists of numbers. So, a little different approach, lots of graphical representations, but the full financials are in the board packet beginning on page seventeen. So all the details are there. So just a quick agenda. So this evening, we're going to talk about the general fund, start there, we'll look at revenue, where we are with personal property, real estate, and other local taxes, and then we'll look at expenditures, as well as the status of fund balance, just a reminder. And then we'll look at the capital projects fund, utilities fund, an update on where we are with school sales tax, and then our next steps. So to begin with general fund revenue, overall, in the general fund, we've collected sixty percent of our budgeted general fund revenues to date. So the financials in your packet are going to be for nine periods, but we know that some of our revenues come in in arrears, so I've updated that on this slide. If we were to collect all our revenues in an even monthly increments, we'd be seventy-five percent collected. That would be wonderful, that's not how it works. So that blue line is seventy-five percent of the year, just to give you kind of an idea of where we would be. And you can see, some are over, some are under. So to highlight those that have not met that, that seventy-five percent target and explain why, the property taxes are, are obviously our largest revenue source. We've collected about fifty-two percent of our budget for property taxes to date. So at this point in the year, that's exactly where we expect to be, because we hopefully all received tax bills in our mailboxes this week, so, or last week. If you haven't, touch base with the treasurer. But we're going to expect to see that other half of revenue come in this month. So that's why we're looking at fifty-two percent, and that's right where we expect. Then you have federal revenue, very small revenue source, that's about one percent of our revenue, and that comes in in June. So that is an indirect cost reimbursement we get from the federal government for social services, so not anything to be worried about there. Recovered costs, that's a moving target. What we have in that revenue line is anything that we are incurring on an expense side, and then we're billing. So for an instance, a deputy goes and provides security services to Walmart, we have that expense, and then we bill Walmart. So generally, forty-three percent is probably because we haven't seen the expenses we expected. So nothing to be worried about there. So to put into perspective what you're seeing here, that pie chart at the bottom shows that ninety-six percent of our revenue comes from those three main revenue sources of property taxes, state revenues, and other local taxes. So some of those other ones that are really, really high above target, unfortunately, are a very small slice of the pie. One thing I wanted to point out on interest, we know interest earnings have been extremely high, we've had great interest rates with the market that we're in right now. However, I did just learn something at a training where I went to. Not included in this hundred and seventy-six percent for interest is some money that I had been reserving, per accounting standards, that was interest earned on ARPA funds. And I learned in this training that that interest actually is not restricted per the law. So I asked Mr. Walmart to confirm that, which he did, and we have about sixty-eight thousand dollars of interest earnings that will now become a part of the general fund. So I wanted to let you know, and, you know, if, if we do not get direction from the board on specific purposes for that money, it will become part of general fund interest and go into fund balance. So I just wanted to let you know that. So an update on property tax, our largest revenue source. As we know, fiscal year two thousand twenty-four revenues, when I look at that projection, we're, we're looking at half of a, those, those revenues are projected based on books, so the land book, the personal property book. And when you're looking at the fiscal year twenty-four, we were basing it on half of the two thousand twenty-three books, which we knew, and then estimating that two thousand twenty-four. So the books just came out from the commissioner's office in May, and I compared those to our estimates, and we were within about point zero five percent of our projections for real estate and one percent for personal property. So that shows us that our revenue estimates are looking good. However, it also confirms what I initially mentioned at the last presentation, that real estate tax is likely going to come in under where we budgeted it. A note on elderly and veterans relief, that number for twenty-four is one point oh six seven million, so that is a little bit higher than what we had initially expected. However, we did have some values that offset that, so I don't expect that, that little bit of increase in relief to make a big difference there. I'm very cautious to project where we will be, but I tried, so don't hold me to this. But at the bottom, I do expect that overall property taxes, some coming in lower, some higher, we're going to meet our projections and maybe have a little bit of excess there. So other local taxes, our next type, largest revenue source, trying to keep it consistent with the graph representation there, this one comes in much more consistently. These are monthly deposits for every single one of, almost every one of these revenue sources. So you can see, we're right, much more consistent there where we would expect to be seventy-five percent through the year. A highlight, bank stock taxes, those come in in, in the end of the year, so that's okay there. Also, you can see business license taxes did really well, and that, those were due in March, so we're over a hundred percent collected there, and we would expect that. Those were, the personal property, when I looked at the personal property books, the business personal property values, yeah, that also went up substantially. So I looked at it, there was some increase in the number of items, but the values of business personal property also went up, which was interesting to see that the business license tax. So I think that, that's a good thing to see our businesses growing. General fund expenses, so we're at seventy-one percent spent, three quarters of the way through the year. The civic contributions, those are just items, things that we pay to our organizations, we pay them upfront generally in the beginning of the year, so that's a hundred percent spent. Health and welfare, we just recently made the full payment to the state upon finalizing that health department agreement, so that is why that one's a little ahead as well. But otherwise, we've implemented a much more hands-on approach recently with spending and making sure that our budget analyst is meeting with departments quarterly, and so we have eyes on the budget everywhere as far as spending goes. Revenue's a little, you know, a little more finance involved, but all of our departments are looking at their budgets every single day, which is wonderful. We also implemented one new, one new process in finance where, whenever anybody requests a purchase order, it's now going through our budget analysts to check, where is it being charged to, how much money is there? So all of these steps that having that budget analyst dig into each, each large purchase is making a big difference. Regarding vacancy and transfer savings, we mentioned during budget season that we are expecting we're going to see more savings than we budgeted. So the budget for vacancy and transfer savings together is six hundred thousand dollars. And some of the vacancy savings are coming from normal turnover, which is what we budget for. There's also some savings that we're going to realize from the two percent increase that we budgeted a full year for, we only did a partial year, so some savings there as well. But it's still too early to give final numbers and, or estimates even, of where we expect, because there's a lot that goes into that number. But I would expect it to have a positive impact on fund balance ultimately. This is just a snapshot, it's not a new slide, but fund balance to, as a reminder, so at the top, it provides the amounts that are appropriated for fiscal year twenty-four from fund balance, that amounts to about five point three million. And then, in the bottom, in the middle section, it's the two and a half million that was appropriated with the fiscal year twenty-five budget, and then you have your remaining available down at the bottom. So all in all, this is not going to change until we're able to finalize our financials for fiscal year twenty-four, but it provides a good reminder where, with what we're working The capital fund, I don't need to reread all of these for you, but I tried to give just a list of some of those projects and where we are, because if you do look at the financials, you can see the budgets and the actual spending for each of them. And so this is where we are with, with our projects for fiscal year twenty-four. And on that same note, the next slide, I'm very excited about this, we have been working on a capital projects website. So this is just a screenshot of what it will look like. This is some, a joint effort between our budget analyst, IT, community engagements assisting as well, and all the project managers. But the goal is that we will have a website where citizens can go and look and see each project that we're working on, find the budget information, the spending, you could, the top, it's hard to see, but the dark blue box will link directly to the CIP project submission, so citizens can see where it originated from. And we've also identified this is something that'll be really nice internally as well, to have all of our projects in one location on our website that will be available to everyone. So we're working on that, it's not quite ready, but when it is, I'll certainly send out a link. An update on the utilities fund, so you recently, in your last meeting, had a presentation from our utilities director that focused a lot on current projects and upcoming projects, unfunded projects, all of the above. So to provide a brief overview of revenue, water and sewer revenues, so the billings from water and sewer make up ninety-one percent of the revenue for utilities. So that was, you know, when I put this together, I already knew that in my head, but it really gives you perspective on, there's nowhere else to go for utilities, when, if those revenues aren't meeting the needs of the expenses and the projects that need to be done, there's not another revenue stream to look to. So I looked at the trends, you can see the charts, the yellow line, I gotta stop using yellow, that's hard, really hard to see, so I apologize for that, but the yellow line shows we're trending a little bit higher each of our billings, and this is something that we track in budget every single month, just to see how the, are the billings, are the billings comparing to previous years. So we're about point seven percent higher for, than fiscal year twenty-three for water, two point seven percent higher for sewer. So all in all, revenues, you know, that, that's little tiny increases for the amount of expenses that we have up and coming. And then at the bottom, I provided an update on unassigned fund balance. So at the end of the year, we're expecting, I did project here, that we'll have one point seven million remaining, and that is based on Ms. Legg's estimation, estimation of using one point one fund balance. So that number incorporates that. Oh, I thought, sorry, I thought Mr. Hudson was looking for a question. So all of these things, just to say that we're doing the right things, we've got a plan in place, we're taking a, you know, an approach to each project to understand what, what kind of funding we need. We have new increases going into effect in July, but ultimately, from a finance perspective, that one point seven is not comforting, that, that's not a good safety net for the extent of projects that need to be done. Also on utilities, just wanted to mention that there is an agenda item that will be coming up later in the meeting, that we'll discuss a little bit more on reallocating some of the ARPA funds to other utilities projects. All right, an update on the school sales tax fund. So I have a fresh update as of the May deposit, so at the bottom, it says that we are, as of eight months, we've collected three point nine million dollars, so about sixty-five percent. We, with one more deposit, we're now at four point four million dollars for fiscal year twenty-four, and that would be seventy-four percent of our budget at seventy-five percent through the year. So pretty solid there with our estimates for budgets. And you can also see the, the total revenue we've received with eight months, as well as interest earnings that we track on this revenue as well. Fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, so as we're wrapping up fiscal year twenty-four, everything that we do is how is this going to impact next year? So we're consistently looking to next year to see what types of impacts our decisions are going to have on that budget. So a couple of things I wanted to make you aware of. First off is that we are, we do engage a health insurance consultant to assist us in navigating the very complex world of health insurance, and they do our negotiations directly with the health insurance company. They also act as another arm essentially of our HR department for very detailed, you know, helping, human resources type consulting. And so we needed a little bit more support in that realm than we were getting, and we went out to bid, and we made the decision to go with a consultant that's going to cost a little more. However, they work with many, many neighboring localities, and I have very, I'm very confident it's going to pay off in the future, both for our employees and for the county, as far as negotiations and other services go. So that, that's going to be a cost increase that, higher than we expected for twenty-five. But then to offset that, we actually had an unsolicited proposal from another local government insuring, insurer, Vay Corp., and Vay Corp. provided a proposal that was just as good as the insurance coverage we had, and provided a pretty decent cost savings. So we did quite the analysis and a lot of, a lot of meetings and discussion, and made the decision to switch that insurance company. And that savings is going to offset the increase in the cost to have a better, a more, a more robust health insurance consultant. Third is just, you know, revenues are trending positively, we're looking good with expenditures because we are monitoring very closely, so we do expect that we're going to have a surplus for fund balance. That amount, still to be determined, and I'll provide that in the next financial update. And then lastly, for fiscal year twenty-five, when I provided that, gave you that slide regarding real estate taxes and personal property taxes, the book, the book that just came out is what our first half of fiscal year twenty-five revenue will be based on. So that number's good. We're going to be up in the air for that number as far as whatever comes out in May of two thousand twenty-five. I did project values for that, but that, that's, that's still, that's what we run into every year with estimating those revenue sources. All right, so what's next? So we're wrapping up the fiscal year, that'll end at the end of this month. We will have an audited, an unaudited update, I'll be back here in September to provide that. I did skip over, we have auditors on site next week as well, so our independent auditors will be conducting preliminary field work next week, they'll be on site. And then they will be back again in September to finalize field work on the audit. And in conclusion, we're looking pretty good for fiscal year twenty-four. Where, where we see some ups and downs, I do think most of them are going to balance out, and we're going to look really good by the end of, by the, by the close. So I am happy to answer any questions, and that concludes my presentation. And that concludes my presentation.
No questions till September?
Love it. I can take it.
Thank you, Ms. Calloway.
Great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I like the graphics. Very well done.
Do you know how hard that is for an accountant to do just graphics? But thank you very much. I'll do that in the future.
Except for maybe the yellow?
I know, yellow line.
Next item on the agenda is citizen comment period. Come forward, speak on anything you want other than the public hearing that we're going to have afterwards.
Good evening. I'm board chair of Girl Scouts of the Colonial Coast. We're a nonprofit organization serving over 6,100 girls and 4,000 adult volunteers in southeastern Virginia, including Gloucester County. Thank you for providing me the opportunity to speak to you tonight about an issue that impacts Girl Scout Camp Burks Mill Pond and 78 neighboring property holders that have waterfront access to Burks Mill Pond. Camp Burks Mill Pond is 36.7 acres. It's a camp property maintained and owned by the Girl Scouts of the Colonial Coast. This property includes part of Burks Mill Pond and Burks Dam, which originally supported a working mill house. The camp is actually two parcels separated by Route 602. The camp has excellent features and our campers canoe, fish, sail, and other activities on this shared pond. The pond also includes a nature trail for exploring archery, hammock camping, and our treacle cabin, which is used for year-round indoor activities and sleeping. The camp is a great place to help girls have adventures in the outdoors and explore the environmental sciences. The treacle cabin is the meeting place for Gloucester County Girl Scout troop meetings during the school year and many camping opportunities throughout the year. Burks Mill Pond is 51.6 acres and offers Girl Scouts and other waterfront property holders a place to enjoy year-round bird and wildlife watching along with fishing, boating, and other water-related programs. Now, it's important to note that Girl Scouts of the Colonial Coast is the sole owner of the spillway, a joint owner of Burks Dam along with VDOT, and another private owner, and one of many landowners with waterfront access to the pond. In 2021, Girl Scouts received a letter from the Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation stating that Burks Dam was out of compliance with the new regulatory standards. The dam is now categorized as a high hazard and the spillway that passes under Route 602 is insufficient. The inundation study concluded that should Burks Dam fail, Route 602 would fail and Route 3 and Route 14 would be impacted. Being good citizens, Girl Scouts became, began a long and extensive process to determine an appropriate course of action. Today, Girl Scouts has completed all remediation recommendations with respect to the vegetation and the dam inspections and has developed an emergency action plan. Our most recent requirement was to obtain an alternatives analysis for a solution. We contracted with engineering firms to conduct multiple studies that culminated in three design alternatives to reconstruct the spillway. And all three require VDOT's cooperation regarding significant modifications to Route 602. As well as modifications to the roadway, the spillway's three reconstruction options would modify the aesthetic and functional features of the pond, which affect the surrounding property owners. The most radical, yet the most affordable option is the fourth option, which is to decommission the dam. The decommissioning option would eliminate waterfront access, potentially reducing property valuations. This option would also destroy the feasibility of retaining Camp Burks Mill Pond as a Girl Scout camp property. It should be noted that every alternative for compliance is very expensive, running in the millions of dollars, which will impact VDOT, our nonprofit organization, and the other co-owners of the dam as well as the collateral impacts to all the property owners around Burks Mill Pond. The alternative analysis is clear. The next steps would be for all dam owners, including VDOT, to collaboratively address the deficiencies of the dam and the road structures to satisfy the requirements of the Virginia Dam Safety Act. We recently presented at the VDOT Fredericksburg District Public Comment and Participation Meeting. And we've requested a meeting for both VDOT and DCR engineers to meet us at Burks Dam to discuss the next steps. We wanted you to be aware of the situation and to offer you the opportunity to collaborate with us and discover how these proposed changes might affect Gloucester County and your constituents. I have prepared packets for you containing additional details and representative photos in that packet along with our contact information. And thank you again for the opportunity to be here and to highlight our concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Catherine Carter, Abingdon District. Both the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of Virginia are your contracts under the people as our servants to secure the unadmissible rights of the individual within the guaranteed republican form of governments, also known as free government. Using the example of two wolves and a lamb voting for what to have for dinner, the founding fathers purposely did not create a democratic republic nor any form of democracy, mob rule, like the summer of love and the violence of the streets we experienced. Article four, section four of the United States Constitution says, "The United States shall guarantee to every state in the Union a republican form of government." Constitution of Virginia, Article one, section five, describes that form of government. Separation of legislative, executive, and judicial departments at periodical elections. That the legislative, executive, and judicial departments of the Commonwealth should be separate and distinct. Also, the people of Virginia are guaranteed uniform government. That the people have a right to uniform government and therefore, that no government, separate from or independent of the government of Virginia ought to be erected or established within the limits thereof. Now, pay attention to what happens to the republican form of government when you and the Gloucester County School Board restrain freedom of speech with time limits, subject matter, overvoicing, interrupting, shouting down, and beauty. All of those I've experienced. The freedoms of speech, this is Article one, section 12, and of the press, write peaceably to assemble and to petition. That the freedoms of speech and of the press are among the great bulwarks of liberty and can never be restrained except by despotic governments. Now, when that happens, we no longer operate under the guaranteed republic and former government. That no free government, there are qualities to preserve free government, which is our form of republican form of government. That no free government or the blessings of liberty can be preserved to any people but by a firm adherence to justice, moderation, temperance, frugality, frequent recourse to fundamental principles. Recur, when any word has been used to signify an idea, the old idea will recur in the mind when the word is heard. The number of each enumerated right in our Bill of Rights should recur when you make any decision concerning our tax money and any of our freedoms. Your public servants hired by the people to protect our constitutional rights and in particular, the freedom of speech, a great bulwark of liberty. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. Would anyone else like to speak?
Good evening, this is Chairman, Members of the Board, Ms. Steele, Mr. Wilmot, Howard Maury, York History. Ms. Calloway put a good, a good presentation tonight. Took two of my items away. So, with that, I'll add an additional one in that the budget for '26, at the rear of the budget, has every department and their costs. And I would like to see that divided into three sections. Salaries, benefits, and operating costs. Then the total, the total for each of the sections, and then the total. And then the individuals in the county that are interested can go back to the revenue side to see which departments are self-sustaining by revenue and which ones are governmental expense for the benefit of the citizens. The squeaky wheel gets the oil. I received an email with a beautiful picture of the newly paved Beaver Dam parking lot. I hope when you marked the lot for ADM parking, it has hash marks 10 to 12 feet wide. Plus, the vehicle, this space accommodates the side exit for the person's ramp and wheelchair. If not done, then the person will take two spaces. Reviewing our Treasury report ending in the third quarter for fiscal years '23 and '24, there appears to be a shortfall of $5.1 million. Do we have an explanation for this accounting? As always, I love looking at the fund balance and the Treasury report as cash on hand. It does not exist, funny money. Mr. Nahages needs to look at this legal process as it can impact on the tax costs of the homeowners as they are the main source of revenue. Additionally, our financial advisors annually say we should carry 15 to 16% of budget funds in reserve for the rainy day fund. Well, the Treasury's accounts have shown nothing for years. We are broke, flying by the seat of our pants, hoping a natural or man-made disturbance does not occur since that would put us in debt and more tax increases. And Mr. Hodges led the scene. But millions of dollars are doled out in grants annually. The terminology is, is the new word, grant, our tax dollars. Days gone by, it was called pork. There needs to be a process where we can have funding set aside for our infrastructure. This way, all those excess tax dollars can be applied to repair our aging water and sewer systems plus provide additional funding for the growth of the system where wells and towers may need to be accomplished when funding locally is not achievable. I thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Maury. Would anyone else like to speak during citizen comment period? All right, we'll close citizen comment period. Oh, excuse me.
I'm Diane, I'm from the Ware District. I don't know where my representative is tonight. But anyway, I'm encouraged to see the word audit in your budget and your financials because it's needed. And also, anything that you give to the school board would be, needed to be audited because of the discrepancies in income versus outgoing. And also, if you're, I'm glad to see that they got a different insurance for the county employees because when you give the county employees a 3% raise and the insurance rates go up 10%, it's a moot point. And also, your emblem, the G with the little wave through it, it's tacky, it's a, an elementary, my six-year-old grandson could have done better than that. I think you need to take the county to task with, with a contest with all the extremely talented artists, artists that you have here and get a much more pertinent county emblem. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? All right, now we'll close the citizen comment period. Ms. Cronin, was the public hearing properly advertised?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
All right, now we're going to have a public hearing to consider a tower lease agreement between New Singular Wireless and Gloucester County. Mr. Baines.
Good evening. Tonight, we're here to have a public hearing on a tower lease for the tower that we call Beehive Drive. The county was approached by representatives of New Singular Wireless with a request to lease space on the communication, for communications equipment to be placed on the Beehive Drive Tower owned by the county. Drafts of the options in the tower lease agreements have been reviewed by multiple occasions by the county attorney and staff. And for the board to consider leasing the space in the tower, a public hearing is necessary. So, that's what we're having tonight. The resolution's on page 75. The lease was in your packet on pages 76 through 103. And the public hearing notice was on page 104. With that, I'm willing to answer any questions. Then we can go into the public part of the public hearing.
Any questions for Mr. Baines?
You okay with our contract we have? It's pretty much the same one we have for the others, correct?
Yes, sir. Multiple iterations, it's funny.
All right, we'll open citizen comment period. It's a little bit differently. Ms. Cronin, do we have anybody? All right, would anyone in the audience like to come forward and speak on this topic? All right, we'll close the citizen comment period. Mr. Baines, well, let's wait a second. Soft shoe while we're waiting?
Oh, me, sorry.
You look more like a marionette than a soft shoe.
Hey, he's been at the gym. He's, he's really, he's going to the gym every.
On page 75. All right, Ms. Steele.
Dr. Worth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Criscott?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you also very much.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is ARPA spending for utilities?
Yes, thank you. So, just as a reminder, first of all, when Ms. Legg spoke at the May 21st meeting, she brought up the possibility of repurposing the ARPA funds that were dedicated to rebuild Pump Station 11 and to address, that's what we're asking for tonight so we can address more pressing items. She also mentioned that if this was done, Pump Station 11 would still need to be rebuilt. But as it stands right now with the funds that we have left, it's going to probably cost more than what we have left. And the consultant, as we indicated the last meeting, did not do full engineering drawings, so. drawings, so that's part of the additional work that would need to get done, and we may or may not be able to meet the full amount of time of the 2026 cutoff for spending the money. You have to have 2024 for dedicating it. But the, and as, I don't know, Mr., okay, just want to make sure. Okay. So a number of projects were raised to you in a slide last time that talked about how they were underfunded, and we anticipated bringing this item to you soon, but we're actually asking to go ahead and do this now because the supply and demand of trying to obtain equipment and things can really take time, and we've had a couple more incidents happen just since the last meeting. Some of these things are, at least two, ones before the meeting and one after the meeting, may have some insurance coverage, but we have no guarantee of that at this point. You may be aware that there is another leak at Burley Road. It's made this social media, and we've tried to respond appropriately on that, and we will be filing for an insurance claim, but it's about 10 feet from where the last leak was, and it is very important that it get repaired. We are right now seeking quotes on that from contractors. We had a very difficult time getting contractors, and also that it was an expensive project. So that just happened, I believe over the weekend. We also, Pump Station 26, which is in the Sewell's Trace neighborhood, had an issue on Memorial Day, and they had a major overflow which fried the control panel, the pumps, and the wiring. And this is similar to Pump Station 11, is that they are both running on a bypass pump. The bypass pump that we have at Pump Station 26 does not, the floating ball-type system does not work, and so employees have to go by there twice a day and run the machine manually, and it's also a very loud machine. So not included, those two items were not included in the list of things that are unfunded or underfunded. A new pump, which I think we need to have one or two on standby from the way things are going, they're $55,000 to $60,000, but to get one that is quiet, and like the one that we are using, and there is a neighborhood area, and we may have complaints that'll come in, that's about $85,000. The leak at Burley, there's no telling what that'll cost, and I would almost be afraid to mention a price, just because I don't want to get people to think it's going to be more expensive than it is, but y'all may recall what the last one did. One of the projects that was mentioned at our meeting that Dr. Orth said that he would like to see addressed is the Gloucester Point Water Tower and getting the stirring of that water so that we can quit having to waste 250,000 gallons approximately of treated water because of the water growing stale and not being stirred or aerated. So there were other projects that were listed. The resolution, and we're glad to answer questions about this, but the resolution before you is not an appropriation because this is already in the budget as CIP money, and it would remain as CIP. What we're asking for is with the county attorney's approval of any spending that would occur, to make sure that it does meet the ARPA requirements, that we be able to move to other projects that fit the price, and we have, as the resolution shows, $855,000 and change left of ARPA funding. So they would be looking at what's available, what can get done in the timeframe, and where are the highest priorities, the biggest bang for the buck, and we do not think that that is Pump Station 11 rebuild. So that is for the board's consideration, and I greatly appreciate you all adding that to the agenda for tonight, too. Thank you. And Mr. Wilmot's approval of that as well.
Do we have any questions for Ms. Steele or Mr. Wilmot?
As much as we went around and around and around in circles with this, deciding on how to spend this money, I have no problem with agreeing to this, but I'd like to see a listing, like when we did, we had multiple lists, and we did this for months because we didn't know, we didn't know what we didn't know. I have no problem with this, but I'd still like to see where this is going to go at some point, just have a listing of, once utilities decides, hey, this is what, I'd like, we need to see that as well.
So given that, I would take the motion to approve the resolution based on Mr. Crisco's comments.
Ms. Steele, we pull, any discussion? Ms. Steele, we pull the board.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Dr. Orth? Motion carries. Thank you.
All right. Board appointments. We have only one open for this month, and it is historical committee for Petsworth.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I am very excited after a long, long vacancy for this historical committee position to nominate Preston Higgins. He is an outstanding member of our community, and I think he'll do a great job.
I'd like to second that.
Yes.
He was my fifth grade science teacher.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. County attorney items?
Just glad to be here, sir.
We're glad you're here, Mr. Wilmot. Boards and commission reports? We need to make the announcement.
Yeah, that we have the MOU and...
Yes. At Lands End, the three groups got together, and there has been an MOU that has been signed recently. I don't remember the date, but it's been very recent. So everybody's in agreement with the activities that's going to happen there, so that's an issue that's been diverted.
Resolved, great.
Resolved, too. Supervisor discussion? Up, go ahead. Go ahead, go ahead.
I just want to get an update, and it doesn't have to be tonight, where we stand on the study for the emergency services, future study that we are going to do.
I can tell you now, if you'd like, because we have, the draft has been out for some time, and so I've reminded people, and I have not received any edits, and I'm not comfortable with it going out until we hear from both fire and rescue departments and from the board reps, because especially with the fire departments, they have to participate and provide the data. So I think it might be helpful if maybe the chair does the next reminder, you know, that might, not just, you know...
Ms. Cronin, can you remind me?
So...
We'll be honest.
It's in the nudge.
And if there's no, if there's no edits, that's great, but if there are edits, we sure want to get them, and I'm very...
You have two things to remind me of, nudge and, I wasn't going to mention the other. Other supervisor discussion, I'll move to there. At the July meeting, we're going to do the appraisals, and where we discussed it before, where it's going to be just kind of us that night with them. It's going to close session.
Very good.
Anything else for supervisor discussion?
So you're telling us we need to think of all the bad things we can think of and good things we can think of between now and July meeting?
One of those won't take you long.
We're not saying which one, are we? All righty. Only one other item on the agenda tonight?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.